Are we on? If everyone will find a seat, we'll call the meeting to order. Purdue Extension helped us with a meal this evening and gave us a report on all their doing, and we just really appreciate that. I think some of us were able to go to that, and they always do that each year, and it's very kind of them. So let me, I'm a little late in getting my paperwork ready. I apologize. We'll call the meeting to order for the Morgan County Council for May 5th, 2025. We'll have the opening pledge. Joe, would you like to lead us in the pledge? And Troy, you want to lead us in the, or Vicki, I mean, in the prayer?
Dear Heavenly Father, we just thank you for this time together in a free country, and we just thank you for this member body of government. Be with us as we go through the task of our work at hand. Be, let our work be pleasing as much as possible to the people that we serve. And we just thank you for this change of season, of rebirth and growth. We ask that you be with the farmers as they head to the fields, keep them all safe and productive. And dear Lord, we just thank you for your Son, Jesus Christ, through all things where possible. Amen.
Thank you, Vicki. I want to let the record show that all are in attendance this evening except Brian Culp. He has a daughter that's her senior year of high school, and she's on the softball team, and they had a rain out, and he had to make up the night. And so I told him that's fine. That was where he needed to be. So he is not joining us this evening. Did everyone have a chance to review their minutes from the April 7th meeting? Were there any questions or changes? Hearing none, I look for a motion to approve.
Troy Sprinkle will make the motion to approve the minutes as presented.
Thank you. We have a motion by, what's your name? Troy Sprinkle. Seconded by Joe Crowe.
Thanks, John.
I traded seats with someone.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Yeah, I did. Yeah. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries six to zero. Do you have a clerk report this month?
No.
Okay. Okay, that's right. All right. Thank you. Under new business, we have a resolution number? Twenty twenty-five dash five five? Okay. And I think Josh is going to go over that with us.
Good evening, council. How you all doing? So, give you a little backstory. So this is a resolution for the creation of an economic revitalization area. This is the first step in any abatement process, any abatement that the county council has ever granted, starts with this step. Tonight's a declaratory resolution, which obligates us to nothing in the future. This is simply a resolution saying, yep, we're going to move forward with the process. There'll be a public notice, there'll be a public hearing, at which time a confirmatory resolution can be considered. Normally, Commissioner Collier would be up here, but he's working at the firehouse tonight, so he asked me to cover this. Should you all move forward with this, well, did any of you watch the commissioner's meeting this morning? Okay, if you did, Commissioner Collier spoke pretty extensively about the headaches and problems that Senate Bill One is going to be causing for our community. Morgan County more so than most because of the way we structured our taxes over the years to help keep property taxes low are being eviscerated at the state level. So with that in mind, it's more important than ever that we support business, that we provide businesses an opportunity to grow and open that platform. And starting that process tonight will help us with that. I think, so essentially, all this really does is lay out, it meets the, this area, this development for the data center, meets the criteria to be considered an economic revitalization area, and gets the process rolling. If you guys approve this tonight, the developer would want to schedule a special meeting at the end of May, because they're targeting closing in early June. And that's important from their deadlines perspective. It's not so important to us. Troy, Commissioner Collier, and myself are having conversations with the project team on negotiations, but none of that's finalized yet, and none of that needs to be finalized for this step. This is, like I said, kind of separate and concurrent. So that, with that, that's kind of the background. I'll turn it over to you guys to ask questions. I'll answer them best I can.
Did everybody get a copy of the revised one?
They should have.
When was it revised? Because?
Four o'clock today.
Yeah, Rick Hall revised it earlier this afternoon.
Right. Yeah, you saw this, wasn't you? And I was just curious about, like, why that late revision?
One, came down in error, so that needed to be revised. And they also modified a whereas clause to reference the act itself, which is part of state code.
Okay, okay.
And there was a typo on page two.
Okay, yeah, because there was one section that I was like, hmm.
Yeah, and if you'll, if you'll look, that, that section's been?
That's been eliminated.
Yep. And the, and there was a?
And any, what other big revisions besides the typo being fixed?
Had on the second page under Section Four, they had the wrong county listed on the original one, and so we got that corrected. And then on, in that same part that was corrected, they had down that there was a electrics, electrical substation in the area, and there wasn't. So I think it had been a form that they had used for another county.
Yeah, they apologized for their error. Got it corrected.
Okay, I was so confused about what property we were even talking about, so.
Yes.
Oh, okay.
So it's, we're good now.
Yep.
Yeah. Because we were, yeah, we kind of looked at the, wait, that's got to be?
What actual provisions is this putting in place? I mean, what is that, what is it more or less saying? Because it's, I mean, it's legal terms, so.
Yeah, so this, the, what this document does is start the process to be able to create an economic revitalization area. The way the state code is set up, if the council wants to consider any kind of abatement, whether that's on real or personal property, this step has to be done first.
Okay.
It's just one of the?
So more or less, it's just giving us the ability to?
Giving you the ability to consider the request.
Okay.
Which, like I said, doesn't obligate anybody to anything, just keeps the process alive.
I just wanted to verify that part of it.
Yep. And any, any kind of abatement that you guys would grant is going to be at the back end of a public hearing, so that everybody has a chance to come and give their two cents.
No decisions will be, we'll make the final decision. There'll be no decisions.
Right. I was just, I was just wondering what, what does entail?
Good question, Joe.
It is the start. You gotta, you gotta have, have that in place now after changes.
Okay, so no one saw anything? I mean, I read through it quickly, but I read through the other one more thoroughly, so.
And that was the only thing that was changed. And they were just corrections where they had the wrong county, and then cleaning up that verbiage in the whereas number five, I think it was.
Okay.
Anyone have any other questions? Hearing none, I look for a motion.
Troy Sprinkle will make the motion to approve the declaratory, declaratory resolution, declaratory?
And it's resolution number twenty twenty-five dash five dash five.
Melissa Green will second.
Thank you. We have a motion by Troy Sprinkle, seconded by Melissa Green. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries six to zero. And thanks for getting all that cleared up.
Yeah, thanks for bringing it to our attention. I would say?
Twenty twenty-five dash five dash five.
If you all are able to settle on a night, the last week of May, that would make sense. Why we're all here, great. If not, we can figure out one offline.
We could, well, while we're here, we might as well get that. What's everybody's schedule like, like the last week of May? Unfortunately, I am out on a business trip the twenty-eighth and twenty-ninth. I'm actually going to leave in the afternoon of the twenty-seventh, but?
Yeah, Monday's Memorial Day.
Oh, so we can't do that.
Josh, is that something that could be done on the twenty-first prior to the workshop?
I don't think the public notice requirements can be met that early. I'm almost positive.
I can do any, any day that week.
What's everybody got in a morning on the twenty-seventh?
I'm good.
Yep, good.
On a morning? I'm in Chicago that morning, but?
Okay.
Most weekdays, unless it's a pre-scheduled meeting day, I'm out of town. Not always, but most.
What's it look like for you, Chip?
I can do the twenty-seventh in the morning, if that's the date that's needed.
That kind. Melissa, we hate to leave you out, but if?
No, I understand. It's, I completely understand. Oh, wait, no, 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 no. I'm good on the twenty-seventh.
Oh, good, good.
The twenty-eighth, I'm in Chicago, sorry.
We do the twenty-seventh of a morning? What's, what's, what about ten o'clock? Where are we meeting? Here?
Have a lunch meeting?
Nine o'clock work for everyone? At nine? Oh, room's not available at nine, it's available at ten.
How many of us are there?
Nine o'clock.
But we can bump who's in the room. They're not that big of a group. They can be in another space.
Okay, nine o'clock on the twenty-seventh then. Nine AM, the twenty-seventh.
This room.
This room. I better put that in my calendar right now. All right, I'll write that down. Okay, that's good. Thank you. Under old business, we have the Health Department, new position to replace the current administrative assistant. Oh, I'm looking at my old, I'm looking at the old agenda. I apologize. Okay, we do have the surveyor request to hire a part-time seasonal help. I'm sorry about that. I was looking at my old agenda.
I'm here from the surveyor's office to ask to be able to use our part-time line.
Just your summer help?
Yeah. So just be probably last week of May through beginning of August.
That's already in your budget?
Yep.
And all that, you're just at? Anyone have issue with that?
No, it's already in there, right?
All right. Hearing no questions or issues, I look for a motion to approve them to hire their summer help in the survey's, surveyor's office.
Chip Keller will make the motion to approve that request.
Thank you, Chip.
Melissa Green will second.
Okay, we have a motion by Chip Keller, seconded by Melissa Green. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries six to zero. Thank you. All right, now we'll do the Health Department. Good evening.
Good evening.
So you'll see a couple of pieces of paper in front of you, just for background information about all of the duties, deliverables, and responsibilities that the Health Department still has. Our funding got cut, but our responsibilities did not. So here we are. The biggest thing that we're here today, we tabled our reclassification of our administrative assistant in March to today. So we are just looking to reclassify that position. We are looking for the name change to a finance slash grants manager, because they're going to be more heavily involved in grants management. Those are the biggest things. I know I sent a lengthy letter to you guys about all of their new responsibilities that they'll be doing. We still have our twenty-one core public health services. We need someone to pay our bills. We need someone to do our invoices, our claims, et cetera.
Who's doing that now?
Me. And Ms. Jean LaFerry, who is still coming back.
Is she back?
Oh, yeah. When she can, a few hours at a time.
She isn't on a contractual basis, is that how?
She is. Yeah, it's under contractual services. Yep. Did anyone have any questions from, I know we reviewed a lot about this in March, so I didn't want to flood you with the same information.
Do you have any idea how much your funding's going to be cut in twenty twenty-six?
The Health First Indiana funding was cut seventy-four percent. So, yep. So what that looks like, so we went, we're going, well, we actually don't know what those numbers are yet. This year, we were awarded the 1.4 million just from Morgan County Health Department. So if we're looking at seventy-four percent, or twenty-six percent of that, that we will get maybe four hundred thousand, so we'll go from 1.4 to 400. So we currently have around just over 600,000 in staff alone in our Health First Indiana budget. So I will be looking at moving people around. We do have a couple of grants that I want to move some folks to, and I'm just in the crunching number phase with all of that right now. We also, so we did a lot of granting with that funding to community organizations. I know we kind of discussed a little bit about that, but, so we will stop all of our granting. That program will just go away. And we were going to open up that RFP, the Request for Proposal process, again here in 2025, but thus far, we've been told that we can carry over funds that we don't use in 2025. So we're going to not grant that funding out and then carry that over into 2026, which should help fill that gap to at least keep my staff on board. So, but just depending on what that number is, I know that some counties have been talking about, like, they're not going to opt in for this if the, the funding is going to be cut that much, and we still have all of that extra responsibility that we still have to do on top of everything. So some counties might bow out from it, which would give us a little bit more funding. I'm not wishing that on them, but it would help us a little bit. So we won't know what that number is until the end of this week, is what IDOH was hoping to get it to us, maybe next week. And then I'll know what that budget's going to look like. But this position is still on the county budget and has been. It's been in eleven fifty-nine. We went back as far as 2021. Linda sent me our budgets from 2021. So it's been in that budget for that long, at least. I mean, I guess it was Jean for how many years? I don't know.
And we have a meeting the twenty-first with our financial, Reedy Financial, to kind of go over what we're going to be looking at. So?
Right.
It's not that we don't want to do things, but it's?
Realistic.
Yeah, I mean, I hate to be a downer, but I really think this is the tip of the iceberg, and we're, we're getting ready to enter an age of austerity where things are going to be very, very different for the next two to three years, money-wise, you know, not just the health funding, but?
Yeah. I mean, Chip and I have talked about, we think we're going to have to ask?
I think we're going to be asking departments to really seriously cut their budgets significantly this year, so. But we won't know for sure until May twenty-first when we meet with Reedy. So I'm very hesitant to, to vote any new increase or position like this right now. Reed?
So what if we just went with flat funding for what this position has always been paid? Just to fill this empty position?
Is it not already in the budget that way?
This position is currently listed as an administrative assistant at the Comon Two Ray's, home salary limits.
Yes.
Which is twenty-two forty-nine per hour for thirty-five hours.
Yeah, I think, I mean, I don't, like, Jean's not going to be around forever to come in and keep helping us. I'm not fulfilling the duties that I should be doing as a department head, because I'm paying our bills and doing things like that, and just a lot of administrative work. So it's, it's a position that we really need.
So just, just to mention a couple, Tricia did make a couple concessions from her first ask. So she took this position from eight hours a day to seven. So that's five hours less a week. And she was also willing to fund it at the low end instead of the midpoint. We've had two people in this position that haven't even lasted nine months.
Three.
Three?
Three in the last three years.
Not even, they haven't even lasted a year.
Why is that?
They're getting?
There's probably several reasons, but what we're able, what, what the salary is now, one of the big reasons, is we're not able to pay for what skills are needed for this position. We need to pay, be able to pay someone that can understand Excel and can do Excel and all these worksheets and, and all of this. And to this point, we haven't had good enough candidates, and the ones that they have hired have not stayed very long.
I think they've over mentioned what their capabilities to some a little bit.
Perhaps.
Perhaps.
I didn't catch that. What about their ability?
Uh, I think they oversold themselves in their interviews.
Oh, I got you. Yeah, 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 yeah.
How are you advertising?
Do I?
How are you advertising for those former positions that didn't stay?
Well, they go on, they go on the county Facebook, they go on Indeed, I send them to all of the employees. And once they go to Indeed, several of the other job boards pick them up. And it goes to more than that, but that's probably the one that you would recognize the most. Several picks, so the word does get out there.
Okay.
She, she may have a problem similar to what I, I had. The last, the last position that we advertised in my office was part-time, and the job description of the book that, and there were several people who had told me, hey, let me know when you have an opening. And when I let them know, they looked at the job description and called me and said, you know, I?
Because of the money or because of the requirements?
Because of job duties.
Requirements.
It's, it's a lot. I, I don't want to be faced with the same problem Tricia has. I have three people retiring that are new to accounting. I, I'm going to have trouble filling those positions. I find the people with the skillset and experience that I don't have. It's going to be hard.
So I remember when we had two different departments sharing someone for a while, like, can, can we be creative? And it didn't work?
It did not work.
Okay.
And, and I don't know, I mean, the biggest problem there was when, when they needed them, they need?
Right, right. Fighting over the?
And plus the return control issue with the being harder to pressure.
Yeah. Were these duties that Jeannie did when she was here? I mean, is, are these, I guess I'm trying to figure out why we're needing this. Because if, is it things that, did she take on too much? And then, and now you're not, she, I mean, she has a lesser load, of course, as a contractual person, but?
Yeah. So with Health First Indiana, our responsibilities have expanded exponentially. We have an extra thirty pages worth of data and metrics that we have to report to the state quarterly. We have fourteen new partnerships and grantees that we are granting dollars to. So that's just the whole, like, grants management piece that the Health Departments have never really had. So in overseeing fourteen new partners spending over $600,000, we're doing check-ins, we're doing site visits, we're looking at their data, they have to report to us, we're making sure that they're spending our dollars correctly, and they're meeting their deliverables, and they're implementing their programs.
I guess I'm trying to understand, was that all the changes when the state said, we're going to give you funding, and you're going to be able to, but here's a lot of more things you're going to have to do?
Yep, hundred percent.
So the state, in essence, gave us a lot more things we have to do, and we're going to fund it, and then now we're pulled it back at seventy-five percent?
Yes, ma'am.
And put us in a predicament. But it's a predicament that we can't take on. And I mean, and I hate it, but in some jobs, we all have to take on more, more roles. I mean, I know in our office, we've had to, to do that, because people have retired or left, and?
Oh, yeah.
So we've just kind of delved out the responsibilities.
But I really just feel like it's not just the Health Department. I mean, we're going to be asking all departments to really make some serious decisions. And I just, I don't know, I don't want to start picking winners and losers, and especially before we really know just how bad it's going to be.
Don't want to make decisions before we know.
I, I feel horrible for Trish, and, and I totally get it, but? I, I feel horrible for Trish, and, and I totally get it, but it's just very bad timing.
Here's a question, too, those fourteen, fourteen partners that they're getting funding from us, right?
Yes.
Is that some of the money that's going away? So are we going to be eliminating some of those fourteen partners because there won't be money to give them?
Correct. So a lot of them, they're going to be able to go through at least to the end of this year. Um, some of their timelines go into twenty twenty-six. So we'll at least need grants management through that amount of time. And then, now more than ever, we need someone who can write grants. Like, there are a lot of grants out there that will grant to government entities, to local health departments. If we can't get consistent funding from the state, we're going to have to find it somewhere else. So, and that's, I mean, that's a, a really, uh, unique skillset, a grant writer. But we're going to need someone to help us with that.
How many hours is Jeanie working?
Um, since Dina left in mid-December, she's worked approximately eighty-one hours. So not quite, well, about two full weeks, and the rest I've just been doing.
Dina Goss is gone?
Yes. It's her position that is empty and has been empty for five months.
She's still with the county?
She went home.
And she went home, and Tricia said I'm done.
Yes.
If, if the council can't go to, I, I can't remember what the hourly rate was.
It was twenty-six. So twenty-two is what it currently is.
We wanted to move it to twenty-nine-nine.
Twenty-nine.
Because we're increasing this position to require a bachelor's degree, so that they can have those skillsets where they can work the Microsoft Office, the Excel, know the equations in Excel, and be really proficient, as well as the grant skills.
So with, with our office, the payroll administrators and assistants, she definitely brings in twenty... They make twenty-five seven oh five an hour, and that's what they, that is the office manager, the highway department manager.
So they're COMOP four?
COMOP four is their level?
What's there, for seven hours? They'd be at fifty?
They'd be at forty-six.
Oh, for the thirty-five? Okay. That's still not terrible. Right, I mean...
I mean, Jean, Jean historically did a lot, Jean did...
Oh, yes.
And she, she did do a lot outside of her job discretion.
And she took on a lot more and a lot more. When somebody's good at what they do, they, you know, they're good at it, and then they take on more duties.
She, I find out something else every day that she's did, I don't know.
Yeah, she's pretty amazing.
And that, and that is a thing with the long-term employees, I mean, somebody who comes along, they just keep taking it, taking it. I have learned with my chief deputy's position, as she's preparing to exit, we are uncovering things on her desk that she's been behind on for over three years. Because she just...
Keeps on taking more.
Taking on more.
Um, I think with this position, we've always had a part-time environmental position in our eleven fifty-nine budget. And that would take care, if we removed that position, that would take care of the difference from our current administrative assistant rate to this finance slash grants manager rate. So that would be like level funding for eleven fifty-nine, as far as that goes.
That's vacant? Environmental, that's vacant?
Yes, because he moved into the full-time role whenever Jason left, um, last summer. So now we have, we have our four full-time environmental health specialists. I mean, it'll be a struggle, but it's, if, if it's that or this, um, that would, this would be the choice. So, that would make up for that difference to where, like, my twenty twenty-six budget would look level. And then I'll just have to find out what my numbers are going to be for your, uh, eleven sixty-one, the Health First Indiana funding, to see if, what else we're going to need to do.
When are they preparing the twenty twenty-six budgets, Linda? Have you gave the forms out to the office yet?
Over a hundred.
It's imperative we have that meeting.
So, one of the things to keep in mind, too, is Tricia is doing things that she's not supposed to be doing. I don't mean that in a bad way, I mean, she's taking on all of these responsibilities because there's nobody there to do them. So she's putting in a lot of hours, so you have over a hundred flex hours that she's worked above and beyond since January.
But those are gone.
So that's two and a half weeks.
Yeah, I'm taking those in a couple weeks, that'll be good. But yes.
I, I mean, that's something to consider, too, because don't want her to get burnt out, and then we're looking for health director. You know?
Yeah, we don't want that either, at all.
And we're going to have to face a lot of tough decisions in the next few months. All of us.
Start. Is there any way we can just wait till our twenty-first meeting, and then come back? And if this works out for some weird reason? Which I, I mean, don't, don't bet on nothing, but...
Sure, but table until June.
If it does, it does, and then you're not out anything.
Yeah, just table until June, maybe?
It's just another, I mean, I guess you are out a month of employee...
And more work.
And more work on you still, but at least if it comes down to it, at least we'll, we'll know.
I will know my eleven sixty-one numbers by then, too.
I'm sorry.
I would know my, like, Health First Indiana funding dollars, too.
Right, right.
We'd have a better vision of what the future looks like.
I mean, for everything to line up, that would be the only way it could happen, I would imagine.
Got a motion, Joe?
Motion to table, I'm sorry, I guess I could have put that the right way. Motion to table the Health Department in position until next meeting? June meeting?
Have a motion by Joe Crone to table this until our June meeting to discuss further after our finance...
Vicky Kivett seconds that motion.
Yeah, a motion by Joe, seconded by Vicky. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, those, same sign. Motion carries six to zero.
I heard we're dragging you out, but...
No, thank you.
Oh, yeah, just a reminder, the council workshops with the Finance Committee and Reedy Financial's May twenty-first at six-thirty here. Is there anything else that needs to come before the council this evening? I think, didn't you have something? Oh, yeah, and did you want to go over that letter?
I could have done what I gave you.
Um, this, has everybody got something on the state called meeting? It's annual meeting of the Indiana County Council Associations. It's Friday, June twentieth, and Saturday, June twenty-first, at the Renaissance Indianapolis North Hotel in Carmel, if you're able to attend.
If anyone wants to attend, the reservations are, just send me an email.
It's mainly Saturday, though. And AIC District is next Thursday, right?
Yeah, did anyone, was anyone able to go to the district meeting? I know Vicky and I are going, Chip, you're going? Okay.
The fifteenth?
Are you going? Okay, Joe, were you able to, to go to that?
That, is that in Greencastle?
Next week's in Greencastle.
Next week's in Greencastle.
Oh, next week's in Greencastle, no, I cannot make that up.
Okay, all right.
Five fifteen?
So there was nothing else to come before the council? Hearing nothing, I look for a motion to adjourn?
Melissa Green will make the motion to adjourn.
All those in favor, oh, do we have a second?
Second.
Troy, what's your name?
Forget it, just, dang, twice in one meeting, Troy.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please...